I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. I'd like to welcome all our guests to our meeting. Counsel, welcome to the first meeting of this term. New council members, I know that the learning curve is pretty steep right now because I remember back to my first term and it was during orientation you were bombarded with many new ideas of governance and strategy. And as we prepare for our study session and we look at the amount of material that we must review, it is, it seems overwhelming at times. I will say one thing, it does get easier. In the next four years, there are going to be many decisions that we will have to make as a group and that is why, and we will need wisdom for them. And seeking wisdom has always been my desire and something that I've always strived to do. And I just wired me to commitment in my daily reading that I read one chapter of Proverbs every day. And given the fact that there's three, there are 31 chapters, I usually get through the, I almost always get through the, through the book. In Proverbs 4, the writer of Proverbs talks about a conversation that he remembers having with his father when he was a young boy. In the conversation, the writer tells us what his father told him about wisdom. His father told him to keep his words, in his, in, his father's words in his heart. To not forsake wisdom, to love wisdom, that wisdom is supreme, therefore to get wisdom. And though it costs you everything, get understanding. There are many ways to achieve wisdom and understanding. But as we move forward, counsel, I encourage you all to get wisdom and understanding however that looks for you. Because together, we've got four years and we need, and it's my desire to make the best decisions for our great city. Thank you. I'd like to turn to item 3, the adopt agenda. There are two changes that I, that we need to make. Under number 10, NE bylaw 20, 2002, Harmony Lane Public Reserve, closing third reading. Would like to omit that. The applicant is postponing, is deferring the decision for a later date. And under number 13, under other business, Councilor Hebert has a concern that he'd like to bring forward, so we'd like to write that in under 13A. Okay, with these changes made, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda, adopt the agenda. Councilor Penner, seconded by Councilor Swagstra. Any discussion? Okay, call for the question, all in favor. Carrie. Okay, moving to number 4, minutes of the October 16th regular council meeting. I'd like a motion to accept the minutes of October 16th. Councilor Hebert. Seconded by Councilor Penner. Any, any discussion? Okay, call for the question, all in favor. Carrie. Number 5, minutes of November 6th, the inaugural meeting. I need a motion to accept the minutes of November 6th. Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Swagstra. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie. Number 6, any business arising from, from the previous minutes? Seeing none. Okay, it is 7:35, so we will go to the public hearing. Conditional use CU 201806, Re. 5 Windham Estates Drive. I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Warquentin, could you please introduce the conditional use?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is an application for a conditional use file CU-2018-06 for property with civic address of 5 Windham Estates Drive. The owner and applicant of the conditional use application, property owner is Robert and Rachel Friesen, and the application, the applicant for the conditional use is Rachel Friesen. Purpose of the conditional use is to allow a daycare center to locate on the subject property. City of Steinbach zoning bylaw 2100 defines a daycare center as the provision of childcare services for nine or more children in a provincially licensed facility. The conditional use is required for all daycare center applications. Notices as required under the planning act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file. Council members do have the background information as provided in your agenda package, starting on page 9. Generally, they, there are no concerns as indicated by administration, therefore recommendation is that city council approve the conditional use subject to any new information that may be provided at the hearing.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak?
If you have a question, then you can ask it.
Does council have any questions at this time?
I just, go ahead. I'd just like to make one note. You stated that there's, if there's not enough parking in your driveway, is ample parking on the street?
I don't.
You know what, excuse me, you'll have to take the podium and state your name and address, please. Oh, and you have to direct the question to me, through you. Through me.
Mr. Mayor, when I was looking through the application, I noticed that there was a comment in there, if there wasn't adequate parking in the driveway, there was too many people arriving at the same time, that at that time, there would be parking on the street. I just noticed that down that side of the street where the residence is, that's a no parking area, so people would have to cross the street to go to the other side.
Okay.
We have a very large driveway, we have a three-car garage, and three actually of my families that are enrolled walk because they're down the street. So parking hasn't been an issue and no one's actually ever used the street yet. So everyone parks on the driveway.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Can we move the mayor to the applicant? Have you spoken to the neighbors about your plans?
I have. We've been open for a year now, so everyone's well aware. Our neighbor to the east actually renovated my classroom for me. It's in our basement and, as I said, three of the families enrolled in my program are, live on our street. The neighbors across the street are clients of my husband's, so yes, everyone's aware. There's been no complaints.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll let you sit down, but don't go away in yet because there might be some more.
Sure.
Is there anyone here objecting to the file? Is there anyone here objecting to the file? Okay, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone here objecting to the file? Well, then we will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Okay, counsel, how would you like to move? Michael Swagster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to, to approve the conditional use.
Okay, seconder. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we have here is a request to, to have a daycare center. It's a different category that we've, in the zoning bylaw that we've now put in there so that way there's the option of looking at this request. The, currently, there's a home daycare there where there are up to eight children. This will allow several more children. It's important to note that this is provincially licensed, so this is simply recognizing, allowing for provincially licensed daycare facility there. The applicant has, they've done their homework, there are no objections. We know that there is a demand for daycare spaces in Steinbach. This is something where there is a need, so I think it makes sense for us to approve the conditional use.
Anything, anything further?
I think this is a positive move. This is something we've been able to add to our zoning bylaw based on the need we've been hearing in our community. And I know there are families like sending their children to home daycares. That's also efficient, it's also efficient because centers like this, you know, saves a lot of capital costs as well. We can put more of these in homes, so I'm very happy to second this motion.
Any other comments? Anything in closing? Okay, thank you, counsel. Yes, I think this is the right way to go, too. As I was campaigning, I heard many times that the, the amount of spaces available for children are limited. I think this is a great way to move. It, it looks like this has been going on for a year already with no problems, so common sense tells me to let it continue. Okay? So I guess I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? It's Carrie. So then we will move, there's no delegation. We'll move to 9A, reports and recommendations of city manager, land sale, Re. Hanover Road East Central Gas. Mr. Warquentin.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a file that was first brought to council committee earlier this year. There was some interest by Center Gas to purchase a parcel of land on Hanover Road East as is shown on the sketch that is in the agenda package on page 25 showing the approximate location. The size of the parcel is approximately one-third of an acre. The, there has been discussions with Center Gas and you see the, the draft sales agreement in the package as well. After further review and considering the long-term planning implications of the, of the request, administration is recommending that city council approve the sale of parcel to Center Gas Manitoba Inc. for the price of $14,400, subject to subdivision approval, approval of the variance for the proposed parcel, and the subsequent approval of a road widening plan for a portion of Hanover Road East.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warquentin. Okay, do we have a motion from council? Councilor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a seconder? Councilor Swagster.
Not to be confused with selling land on Hanover Street, this is Hanover Road. So that is an important difference since we've just finished purchasing the other. This is a fairly straightforward decision here and I think it makes sense that we work with Center Gas to help them in construction.
And anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to proceed. This is something that the previous council had looked at before and it makes sense to accommodate, to sell this land to Center Gas Manitoba so they can develop their primary gate station and, because it provides for long-term natural gas service cap capacity and that's good for the city.
Anything further?
Mr. Mayor, is this appropriate time to ask a question, Mr. Warquentin?
Yes, you can ask a question through me to administration.
I had a question that, is there an extra cost going to be associated to the city for this?
In the sales agreement, it is listed that Center Gas is obligated to cover all survey legal and other related costs with respect to the sale.
How about the widening of the road?
That is a particular matter that is initiated by the City of Steinbach for future planning purposes. For that particular action, that is something that the City of Steinbach would cover the costs for.
Anything in closing?
Nothing in closing.
Yes, thank you, counsel. I think that this is appropriate, this is a good decision for moving forward, for, for future service and for future development. So at this time, I'll call for the question, all in favor. All opposed? Carrie. Okay, now we'll move to number 10A, accounts payable in the back of the book, I need a motion to, to accept. Councilor Damian Penner, seconder. Councilor Siemens. Any comments?
Need to pay our bills.
Anything else? Anything in closing? Okay, we'll, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie. Okay, then we got 10B, financial statements ending October 31st, 18. That is also in the back of the book. Councilor Siemens, seconder. Councilor Hebert. Any discussion?
Makes sense.
Anything in closing? Okay, call for the question, all those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, we've got building permits on page 26 in the package, that is 10C. Counsel, we've had a good month, 14, just, just over 14 and a half million, which makes the year-to-date just a little over $45 million to date. I need a motion to approve building permits. Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Hebert. Any comments?
This is a substantial month and it is the City of Steinbach who took the biggest building permit out there for $10,589,000 for the water treatment plant, but it is still a good, a good month as well as there's 126, or there's 27 dwelling units added to, to make 126 year-to-date. So we're not on pace for a record year for the dwelling units, but we are on pace for a good average year.
Anything further? Okay, anything in closing, Councilor Siemens. Okay. Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, we got 10F.
10D.
Oh, sorry. Oh, 10D, business license, thank you. We've got, on page 28, we've got business license. I need a motion for that to approve. Councilor Penner, seconded by Councilor Penner. Any comments?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask for the question, all in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, 10F, bylaw 2111, special service plan, first reading, that's re. the curbside collection and disposal of solid waste. Mr. Warquentin, could I please ask you to introduce?
Yes, this is a bylaw being proposed by administration which addresses the residential curbside waste collection service offered by the City of Steinbach to its residents. This bylaw due to the requirements of the municipal act is a periodic requirement and it refers to a special service plan, which is a mechanism provided by the province of Manitoba to allow municipalities to, to identify and provide a specific service to, to the community. This is not a new levy, it is a renewal for an existing levy, as the city has provided the curbside residential garbage collection service to its residential property owners for many years. This particular plan will require a public hearing, however, at this point, the recommendation is for city, city council to approve first reading and if that is approved, the public hearing would be scheduled for December the 4th.
Okay, counsel, we need a motion for first reading. Councilor Swagster?
First reading.
And second, Councilor Penner? Okay, go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager noted, this is a, a renewal of our existing levy that we have for residential curbside waste collection and the levy is scheduled to go up by about $4 per year, which is very much in par with what it's been for the last number of years. We have excellent curbside waste pickup in Steinbach, it's a good service that is provided and, so this is very clear about what, what that cost is. So I think it makes sense to give first reading and then we'll have an opportunity for public feedback at second reading.
Okay, Councilor Penner?
Thank you. I also think it's important to note that annual interest rate increases are projected with this as well. It's important to keep that in mind when we're making decisions. So I'll support the motion and then we'll get to hear from the public on December 4th.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, anything in closing? Okay, well, let's call for the question. All those in favor? That's Carrie. 10G, bylaw 20, 2109, rezoning, 415 and 421 Hospital Street, first reading. Mr. Warquentin, could you please introduce?
Yes, this is an application to rezone two specific lots on Hospital Street presently owned by the Southern Health Authority. These properties are being used indirectly for services that are being provided for the Bethesda Hospital. The application to rezone would, would be scheduled for a public hearing at a future date, provided that city council give this bylaw first reading. Recommendation from administration is council do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warquentin. Looking for a motion for first reading. Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Penner.
That was a motion to approve, by the way.
Okay, motion to, sorry.
This is again, first reading the same incident, we need to then go to public hearing after approval, but Southeast Man Health owns these properties, they want to develop them, they own many properties in that area and that's part of their health campus. So we should, we would like to hear from the public after we approve first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, yeah, this is, this is a part of, part of the plan of, of the campus for the Bethesda area and as, as noted, there is a lot of land that is already owned and it only seems appropriate that they are able to put forward their plans for being able to develop that area further.
Anything in closing? Okay, well, thank you. Let's call for the question. All those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, item number 11, council question period. Are there any questions of council? Okay. None, we'll go to section 12, correspondence and petitions. 12A, J Cap Library, re. the minutes of September 19th and October 17th. What would you like to do, counsel? Take his information? Okay, 12B, Today House, re-support. What does counsel want to do on this?
Take his information.
Take his information, okay. And 12C, Youth for Christ, also a letter of support. Also take his information, okay. Okay, that brings us to 13A. Councilor Hebert has a concern you'd like to share with us? Councilor Hebert, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, in discussion with other members and the subject that I brought up was regarding laptop at our council meetings here for members of this council, and I would like to make a motion that the funding be made available by the City of Steinbach for the purpose of providing or purchasing a laptop for each member of council requiring or requesting such an electronic equipment for the purposes of conducting the day-to-day operations of council. A laptop is considered an important aid when attending official meetings for the purpose of conducting city business, thus making such tasks more effective and efficient.
Okay, do we have a second? Councilor Siemens. Okay, you have the floor, Councilor Hebert.
There's some members on this council that are requesting that funding be made available for the pers, purpose of purchasing a laptop conducting the City of Steinbach council work. If granted, council members would utilize such laptop in order to take notes at meetings, research legislation policy, and for the purposes of studying for council meetings. Laptops would be utilized during council meetings. It would be considered prudent for, that the city council information, including confidential secret information, not be stored in paper form or on personal computers where unauthorized family members or others have access to such documentation and information. Many or most council members in Manitoba utilize laptops at their council meetings in order to conduct their official city or municipal business. Personally, I find it more efficient and effective to take notes on a computer during meetings. Such note-taking can be saved on the laptop, is legible, and may be retrieved at a later date. Over the past 20 years, I've utilized a laptop for the reasons just mentioned. During this time, I also did all of my studying on a computer and would appreciate a laptop in order to study for council meetings and meetings in general. I'm also aware that there are other counselors that also require a computer in order to be more efficient as they conscientiously conduct the business of this, our city. On the other hand, there are several council members that appreciate the status quo and determine that documentation provided in paper form is sufficient, finding this adequate and effective when conducting their council business.
Thank you. Councilor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I seconded the motion to, so that we could speak to it. I'm not in favor of council purchasing computers, so I will vote against the motion. But having done some homework on this, very recently, I talked to the local RMs, different, I think there's other issues here. We don't have a policy as a, as a city on process or protocol moving forward for council. We do, we will have one for staff. At best, I would like a report from administration on how to proceed. I think there have been issues with the RMs on how computers were used and the process. There are a variety of them. I can't speak to all of them, now it would maybe take too much time, but there, there's different varieties. There are some RMs that are providing a certain amount of cash and then it's up to the council who buy those computers and they can use them at their leisure. There's others that lock up the computer and you can only use them at a council meeting and you can't take them all. I think there's different ways to, if we're going to do this in any form, then, then we need a policy and a recommendation through, from administration, but at this point, I'm not in favor of computerizing, having laptops sitting.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Councilor Swagster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not support the motion. I think that we need to consider that the current arrangement that we have where we get documentation by paper works just fine. It is something that previous councils had looked at and each time the decision was made not to go ahead. And there's a number of reasons for that. First of all, we're talking about city tax dollars here. So we're basically looking at a request to spend a certain amount of city tax dollars in order to buy everyone a laptop. And I just don't see that as a priority. I don't see that as something that any of us campaigned on. This was not something that came up at the door ever. It's not something that anyone put on anyone's brochure that, you know, all council members need laptops. We need to remember that this is also, it's a part-time job. We are part-time members of council. Yes, there are plenty of occupations where, when it's a full-time job, then you get a company computer and such. But the reality is, we do not have offices here at city hall. We use our own personal phones. I mean, the question was raised in regards to security and all that. Well, no one here is proposing that the city has to provide each of us with a specific city phone, so we carry two city phones around. I realize that when you have full-time politicians, they get, they have their, their politician phone, their government phone, and they have their personal phone and they carry two phones around. I don't think any of us here are interested in doing that. We simply use our personal phones and we're making city phone calls and we're getting city emails and we do have a city email account that can be forwarded to our phone if we choose to do so. There is, there is no reason why we cannot do the same thing in regards to laptops. It should be noted as well that the information that we get in our packages is emailed to all members of council. We do have the opportunity to, if we want to use it electronically, we can, we can do so. There is no policy that prevents anyone from going out and purchasing a laptop and bringing it into the council chamber and using that if they wish to do so. We already have the option of doing that because the information is, is brought here. I would rather everyone not have a computer sitting here because I've seen how, what happens with a lot of councils is that people look at the screen. We're looking at the screen and we're kind of scrolling along and we're looking at that as opposed to looking at each other during the debate and as we're having this, this discussion. So, and I'm not interested in getting staff to do yet another report and looking into it. I think staff time actually means something and I'm just not interested in moving this direction, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Any other comments? Councilor Penner?
It seems to me there's two issues maybe in the motion. First of all, whether laptops should be funded by the city for us and also whether we should use them at meetings or not. So to me, those are two separate issues. For example, support having laptops for personal, or for city business, but not bring them to the meeting. So that's one thing I'd just like to clarify. Regardless, I will not support the motion. I just know from my experience on council, we do not, well, I personally do not use a computer for significant amount for council business. What we have, like Councilor Swagster said, is a part-time job and I can easily use my personal computer, for example. Also, everybody kind of uses different technology. Some people use iPads, some people use laptops, some desktops, some phones, right? So the, the most I would be willing to consider is it would maybe be a tech allowance, but it would have to be for a very small amount because this is a, this is a relatively, not a time-consuming job, very part-time position, I'd say, maybe quarter-time, probably. So when you look at it that way, I, I'm not sure that it makes sense for us to all get laptops. So I will not support the motion.
Any other, oh, Councilor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I will be supporting this motion and, and for, for multiple reasons, but one of the main ones being that this is a part-time job and we are expected to fit in council duties while we are still operating at our full-time capacities and outside of council duties. So for myself, just as a fine example, while I'm at work, I might, may find that I have a half hour spare time. I currently am lugging around approximately 400 pages of correspondence to be able to review that at any given point in time. That's a, that's a large cumbersome string to be moving around. It would be a lot more efficient to have a laptop that I can pull up and as noted, all correspondence is already on, on email available, so we can pull that up and we can review that. We need to make sure that we're looking at all departments to, that we're having accessibility to information as well as efficiency and that includes us as counselors. We need to have accessibility to our information and we need to look for efficiencies. And for myself personally and other members around council, note-taking, for some of us, is done far more efficiently. And for myself personally and other members around council, note-taking, so, for some of us, is done far more efficiently via laptop. Writing is not a skill that we necessarily can, uh, can use for note-taking and something that we haven't adapted and we are familiar with note-taking on computers and something where we need to look at how we can be the most efficient as council. I do agree with the sentiments of there being a policy in place. I do agree that when computers are used at council, there can be a distraction. But also, as during our meeting, there was a lot of page flipping around, lots of looking at the books and noise of the pages as well. So that could be deemed as a distraction as well. So I will be supporting the motion, but I do agree that there needs to be a policy put in place for the use of laptops.
Any comments? Okay, anything in closing?
I'd just like to say what I, the motion I made, it was, uh, you know, some of the high points. It's, uh, like Counselor, uh, Penner just said, it's for confidentiality. He's, you know, he doesn't have to have his papers laying around where he works and stuff. Uh, that's obviously an important point, but more, the funding is minimal. When we're talking laptops, it's not a big cost. And I also heard members say, well, I, I don't need one. I won't, I won't use one. But we're just asking, maybe there's only two or three members here that, uh, would, uh, appreciate one and, uh, it would make their work more effective, more efficient. So we're asking for a nominal cost. We're not asking for seven computers here. Because as stated, many of the members, uh, of council here stated that they don't, uh, they wouldn't utilize one. And, uh, and so on, on those points, I just think, uh, again, that it would make, uh, for some of us, would make our work, uh, a lot easier, would make it more effective, especially when some of us over the years, for me, the last twenty years, I've done all my note-taking, all my business recording, all that work on a, on a laptop. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Um, I will be voting against the motion also. Um, I, uh, I'm finding that the, uh, the older I get, the further I get into technology, I hardly ever use a computer anymore. I use my handheld device for almost everything. And, um, I'm also, I did some research too, as, as did Councilor Siemens. And, uh, I, I contacted, uh, had contact with AMM and they actually are starting to go away from computers. They're finding that, uh, a hard copy is much better for a meeting. And I, and I would agree that we have very good meetings because we're, we're looking at each other, we're talking, we're actually conversing during, during the, the time that we are discussing. And, uh, I do, uh, I like, uh, Counselor Penner's advice or, uh, suggestion that we go to, that we maybe look at a small, uh, perk for, or like an, an allowance for technology. That could be something we could do too. But at this point, uh, it's, it's part-time. I think, uh, now, uh, so, many of the new councillors, there's lots of note-taking. There's, you're overwhelmed with the new, new, the, the new information, so you're taking a lot of notes you want to remember. After, I think, after a few months, you're going to find that everything you need is right here at your fingertips in the package. And it's easy to flip by. The agenda is always marked by the page and I think you can, you'll be able to follow along much easier. So, uh, I will not be supporting this motion, but I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's, uh, motion denied.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, we'll go to fourteen, adjournment. Need a motion for adjourn? Councilor Penner, Councilor Swagster, all in favor? Carry.